Yes.
I have an email from three hours ago that not only included the brochure, but also tonight's agenda.
But that's three hours ago.
Well, they just presented us the presentation we're going to see, but the agenda was set out. The call for this meeting originally was stamped on June 9th. It's set it out on June 9th. You called me? I did. When I originally introduced this, when we called for this to be held on this night, but the June 9th was when this conference was, notice was sent out. Okay, clerk, call roll.
Councilor Cooper, roll. Councilor Tenevi Garcia, absent Councilor Robertson, absent Councilor Taylor, absent Councilor Lopez, Councilor Vega Maldonado, absent Councilor Nada.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Vido, absent Councilor De Jesus, absent Councilor Judy Garcia, absent.
Okay, I just want to note for the record that we also have in attendance, also members invited as the city manager. We have the Housing Community Development Director, Alex Train, Sustainability Manager, Abraham Lopez Hernandez, Economic Development Planner, Carl Allen. The call of the meeting is to have a conference today being held on Wednesday, June 22nd.
Is this an official meeting since we don't have a form for?
About to state.
Okay.
The following matter will be discussed to discuss the ordinance establishing and building energy report and disclosure requirements by amending the Code of Ordinances. The ordinances as proposed as a change were introduced by myself back on May 9th, and it was sent to Subcommittee on Committees for this meeting. And we will be holding a public hearing on this ordinance at this upcoming Monday's meeting, City Council, prior to the regular scheduled meeting. So as noted, or as noticed by City Council Vice President, Councilor Brown, we do not have a quorum, but will still hold the meeting, but the clerk will note, will write down that the quorum was not achieved. But we will go forward and hear from our staff here on the proposed ordinance. So with that, I'll give the floor to Alex Train, or the city manager, either one, whoever wants to take the lead. Yep.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for calling this evening Subcommittee on the Proposed Building Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance. So my name's Alex. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development. In this capacity, I also oversee the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability. This regional office formed in 2021 manages sustainability and climate resilience projects for Chelsea, Revere, and Winthrop. Ibrahim, our Sustainability Manager, is at the helm of that office's sustainability practice. It's focused on reducing energy costs for residents, promoting clean energy sources, improving air quality, and reducing our reliance on fossil fuel. So the office right now spearheading a variety of different sustainability endeavors. This includes energy efficiency measures for homeowners as well as small business owners to reduce their monthly gas and electric bills, promoting the conversion of homes to, from gas to electric as their source of heat and power, a community solar project, as well as the municipal aggregation program that was previously adopted by council, which will allow the city to bulk purchase electricity to provide it to residents at a lower cost, achieving cleaner power supply. So in addition to these efforts, the office is also undertaking a zero-carbon action plan. And so this plan sets out strategies and actionable recommendations to achieve a zero-carbon economy by or before 2050. And so it tackles everything from the transportation sector to commercial and industrial buildings. One of the main tools that the office has been exploring is this Building Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance. And I guess I'll preface this by saying that the policy before you tonight is geared towards monitoring and instituting energy efficiency measures at large industrial, commercial, and residential properties. This does have anything to do with homeowners, smaller properties, like one to four-unit buildings, or small businesses. So this only pertains to large warehouses, extremely large commercial buildings, and large, high-density apartment buildings. And the crux of this policy that Ibrahim will talk through tonight is really to collect information from these larger properties on how much energy they consume. We can then see by the energy consumption their rate of pollution, as well as the type of energy that they're using. This allows us to do a couple of things relatively effectively. You know, the first is that with this information that's reported, we're able to identify the largest contributors to air pollution in the city. With this information, we can strategically target air pollution abatement efforts in conjunction with our community-based partners. Secondly, we're able to identify businesses that are good candidates for those energy efficiency programs. And so large consumers of electricity, like factories and warehouses, are often older antiquated buildings with systems that are not as energy efficient as they could be. So by introducing these measures after we receive these reports, we're able to lower the energy costs, assist them in switching over to a cleaner source of power, and ultimately reduce the amount of energy that they're consuming. And so it's a relatively straightforward process that we'll outline for you tonight with regards to the reporting that would be required under this ordinance. Since we began development of this, we've been engaging with numerous property owners, including commercial and industrial property owners, to understand how they manage energy right now. And we've been extremely sensitive to ensure this isn't burdensome for homeowners or any type of residences. Therefore, we've excluded owner-occupied properties and smaller housing properties from this ordinance. And we've created a workflow that you'll see tonight that should be workable for the majority of larger commercial and industrial properties. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ibrahim. He'll share a short presentation with us, and then we can open it up for questions and discussion.
Hi, my name is Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez. I am the Sustainability Manager with the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability. And I will be going through this presentation just to give an overview of what the ordinance that is being proposed is composed of. So as Alex mentioned, energy benchmarking policies are aimed at helping building owners and facility managers to reduce their electricity consumption, energy use, in order to save money, as well as to comply and reach net zero with some new developments that have happened in Massachusetts on a regulatory basis. So in terms of background, benchmarking policies have been used in the United States for years now. A lot of municipalities and state governments have instituted them, since a lot of utilities have cited privacy concerns and are not necessarily willing to provide information directly to the city government. Right now, here in Chelsea, the municipal buildings are being benchmarked as part of the Department of Energy Resources Green Community Program. So we're complying with that program by benchmarking our municipal facilities. And then in terms of regulatory updates that are key to, one of the reasons this would be a worthwhile effort to implement is that the state approved the Climate Roadmap Law in 2021. So this law actually requires the Commonwealth, as well as municipalities within them, to reach net zero by 2050, and an even more ambitious goal of halving GHG emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, by 2030. So we have those mandates as statute. Another incentive for participating in these types of activities is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council that has released last year a municipal playbook on what are the policies and strategies that municipalities can use to try to reach to net zero by 2050. And this benchmarking policy is one of those highly recommended policies that municipalities should adopt. So this is a quick overview of some of the policies that are right now in the United States. Almost 35 cities since April 2021 have instituted them. Some notable small cities that might be similar to Chelsea that have been able to institute these programs include Edina, Minnesota, St. Louis Park, Missouri, South Portland, Maine, as well as West Chester, Pennsylvania. And so some key elements for understanding how these types of policies work in municipalities is categorized into four big buckets. The first one being property types that are covered under the policy and the thresholds to select them or identify them. The first one is that the types that are usually categorized are residential, non-residential, and municipal uses, as Alex had mentioned before. The thresholds that are used in all of these policies are called the gross floor area, and most if not all municipalities exclude parking from that threshold. The other element is the reporting deadline and enforcement mechanisms to comply with this policy. So deadlines can be assigned by property types. That is the case that the City of Boston instituted in 2013, where the largest of all the buildings would have to report in the first year as a trial basis, and then from the second year onward, the smaller buildings that would be having to report would have to report.
Ibrahim, before you go on, the first one, property types, can you, did you talk more specifically again, I guess, the gross area? Whether it be residential, is it per units? What size residential building are we looking at? I know we talked about it, Alex, but it was offline, and I just want to make sure I understand. What's the threshold for residential building to be included in this?
I'll just jump to showing it. So in terms of the thresholds of how the policy works, it's through gross floor area for all building types, and there's an additional requirement of dwelling units that is instituted. So the minimum square footage for a building to qualify to having to report under the ordinance is 20,000 square feet. So any building that has a gross floor area of 20,000 square feet or more excluding parking would have to report.
No.
We have a map.
They have a map, right there.
That shows. We can just got that. And then the residential side is 20 units or more.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty.
Twenty, so 20 units or 20 units? Or 20,000?
Yep. So those are the two primary requirements. The policy also requires municipal buildings, which are already being benchmarked, as well as the Chelsea Housing Authority, irrespective of their square footage or dwelling amounts, would have to report. And so these are the breakdowns between large, medium, and small residential and non-residential properties that would have to report under the ordinance. Just going to go back real quick.
Not yet, hold on.
In terms of benchmarking platforms, this is another key element in order to facilitate receiving information for the city. Most municipalities use Energy Star Portfolio Manager. It's a software developed by the Environmental Protection Agency at the federal level. It's free to use, so it's been widely adopted for this. And then the last piece is data disclosure and performance requirements. So cities publish this information as a public record. In the case of Cambridge and City of Boston, on a yearly basis, they have either a spreadsheet that folks can download or a map that they can see who complied, who didn't comply, by how much their energy went up or down on a yearly basis. And so two main things to consider when administering this type of policy at the municipal level is data quality. So in order to have this program run effectively includes identifying those properties, getting their gross floor area through the assessor's database, access to energy and water usage data, which we'll be talking about in the next slide, data quality procedures, so everything looks in shape and in the same order for each building, as well as data disclosure procedures to understand and then identify how to best inform the public of this information and this program. And then the other one is communications and logistics. Notifying property owners is very important, and it's something that has to be identified within it. Procedures to exempting properties is also a key task that has to be developed. So there might be scenarios that property owners or facility managers might feel that it's too onerous. There is room for exempting property owners. The criteria for those have to be developed, but that is a possibility as well. And then communications with property owners on energy efficiency opportunities, grants, funding mechanisms. And then enforcement details, who would be the notifying authority, and then what is the procedure for notifying if they are not compliant. And then the last point, which is very important in all of these scenarios with these other cities, is technical assistance. So a staff member can sit down or meet with a owner or facility manager if they don't know how to set up an account, if they don't know how to get their energy data, and we can walk them through every step in order to comply. And so these would be the steps that Alex had mentioned at the beginning that would look like for non-municipal buildings. So within the eight steps, we start with the city identifying the building owners. They notify the building owners that they're required to report. Building owners then acknowledge the receipt, and then they select their information or request their information from the utilities, in this case, EverSource and National Grid. EverSource and National Grid have programs already to facilitate this, so building owners create an account with them, and then they receive their information through a spreadsheet that they can upload into that software, Energy Star Portfolio Manager. And one of the reasons why this is being proposed is because of these two graphs. So in Chelsea, 7% of the buildings in Chelsea represents almost half of the gross floor area. So with the thresholds that are being proposed in this ordinance, the city would be able to understand by how much energy is being consumed for almost half of the gross floor area throughout the entire city by just requiring 7% of the buildings in the city. And so this is a preliminary map of the buildings that would have to report. The purple, red, and orange buildings in the city are the non-residential properties. The lighter shade of blue and green are residential properties that would have to report. And as you can see, the whole majority of triple-deckers, single-family homes, two-family homes are exempt from having to report with this ordinance. And those are all the slides. Yep.
How did you locate those buildings that you just showed us? You can present it to us.
I couldn't hear the question well, sorry.
So how did you locate those buildings there?
So the process for identifying them is getting publicly available information from the assessors. It's called the L3 data set that you can download from MassGIS at the state level. And then you put it on a map, and then you do a query or math in order to know which assessor entry actually surpasses 20,000 feet of gross floor area excluding parking or not. And then you transfer it.
So basically, those are, if this project was to start today, those would be the ones that would have to report back to you?
Yes.
And so once they report back to you, you would give them an assessment of what the findings that they may not be aware of is in their gross area?
Yeah, so part of the, one of the goals of this program is to understand how much they're consuming, and then having a list of resources to be able to share with them if we find that their consumption at a square footage level is abnormally high for the state median or mean for the average of the state or the greater Boston area, which that information is also available.
And so just to add to that, so the graph that Ibrahim had illustrated above shows that, you know, this is roughly 7% of the buildings in Chelsea, yet it makes up half of the floor area and a disproportionate amount of the energy that's consumed and air pollution that's caused. And so this gives us sort of a list to prioritize, so we can say, okay, these are the top consumers and polluters. We need to assiduously reach out, engage with them, and encourage energy efficiency upgrades, show different financing options to them, and work closely with all of the property owners to adopt cleaner systems. Right now, we don't really have a good grasp. We know anecdotally where the industrial buildings are, as well as, you know, which ones are causing some degree of air pollution, but we aren't able to do it with this level of precision. And given the limited resources available for energy efficiency, we want to make sure we're using those resources wisely. So this would allow us to do that more strategically.
So if I could just back up on my question, the reason why I brought that question up, it indicates or it gives me some understanding that there's already been some work prior to this meeting here. Is that just with a collaboration with the city and Mr., I'm sorry?
Lopez.
Lopez, Mr. Lopez, and he's from the North Suffolk Reliance Stability?
Correct, yep.
So is, I think I read something, how long has this been in effect?
So this office was established almost one year ago, so start of FY22. We house it in Housing and Community Development, and so it consists of two full-time staff right now.
So two times, two staff on his side?
Yep.
Which is housed here?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so two staff. So is the finding of these buildings just a collaboration with the city? Or has anyone else given any ideas of what buildings they should be looking at?
That's a good question. So when we were developing the proposed policy, we met with a variety of property owners throughout the city to understand their building characteristics, how they manage energy, as well as what would be overly burdensome and what would be manageable. In addition to that, you know, we've collaborated with community-based organizations, as well as the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to understand how this could be a best practice. There are communities that Ibrahim mentioned that have implemented this type of policy before. Since they've been doing it for a little over a year now, we have a lot to learn from them, so we can apply that to the proposal in Chelsea to make sure this works as well as possible. But we see this right now as, you know, a proposal. So if council believes that the thresholds could be different, you know, we're certainly open to any guidance or suggestions that you have on the size of buildings.
Well, in my opinion, I speak my opinion only. It seems like that you already got the ball rolling. You're just bringing us up to speed of what you're doing and what you're going to continue to do, because you already have numbers, you already have locations, and you want to build on that. That's in my opinion.
We do have a lot of data right now. The one thing we don't have, which is, you know, this regulatory policy. And so we understand where the largest buildings are, but we have no insight into energy consumption or pollution levels right now. And so this proposed policy, if passed by council, would give us that insight.
So you mentioned, in my last part of the question, you mentioned EverSource and the other entity. Now, they have programs set up to help residents or to set up the, I think you said, an account?
Yep.
Set up an account.
So they have programs available to help residents and property owners download this information and then upload it to the city's reporting platform. So we would be using a platform that the Environmental Protection Agency created, and it's a relatively streamlined website that you go to. You upload the spreadsheet that includes all of your data that's from the utilities. And so both the utilities have made it relatively easy for customers to access this information, and the platform that we're proposing they upload it to would also be easy to use. The main issue that Ibrahim pointed out that I do want to underscore is the utilities right now will not share customer-level data with the local government directly. And so as a result of that, we are proposing this policy since there isn't that free flow of information from the utility to the municipality right now.
Alex, if I could just say, actually, I think this is critical. All this is, is a reporting requirement. If you pass this, all you're saying to these large property owners that make up just 7% of our city is that they have to report this information to us. This, for almost all of them, this information is readily available. They have it. They've already got files on this. This simply would require them to report it to us so that we can then make our own assessment, and we can assist them and assist the city in reducing pollution and creating more energy efficiency. It's just a reporting requirement, nothing more than that.
Councilor Cooper, you have a question?
Yeah, I got a few questions.
Please speak into the microphone.
I got a few questions. For one, down here, you want to disclose the water in all buildings. You already know how much water they use, because the city sends out a bill. So here it says disclose on annual emergency and water use in all buildings according with this section. The city already knows how much water you're using. So I don't know why the tenants, which says that tenants and homeowners have to disclose that. Then another one down here, that's residential, large, 50,000 square feet. 50,000 square feet is a three-story unit. If you count every, what is the average square foot of them?
So an average?
Twenty thousand square feet.
For what?
Residential is 20,000 square feet minimum or 20 units?
Well, it says 20,000 right there, right?
You said 50.
No, on top. I'm talking about a large unit. Small units, 20?
It's 20,000 square feet and 20 units.
And so no one less than 20 units is covered by it. If you don't have a building with at least 20 residential units, this doesn't cover you. It doesn't matter how many square feet you have.
So it doesn't, so, but in this paper, this, it does not say directly, large buildings, buildings over so many units. It just says buildings. That can mean any building. It doesn't say, on this paper, it does not tell you the size of the building.
It does. It says dwelling unit threshold. And so it says the least, the smallest building that's required to report must have at least 20 units.
So that's one thing. But here's the problem, I have a problem here. What about the condos? They're all individual units. See, here it says association or units owners responsible for overall management of the case of a condominium. So each owner has to report on the condominiums themselves?
Only if there are 20, more than 20 condominium units.
Condos now that are more than 20 units, most, there's a lot of 20-unit condos in Chelsea.
But it would be the management company?
No, over here it says the individual, even the tenant.
Right, but so on larger condo buildings, water sewer is almost in all cases paid for and managed by the condo association. These larger buildings similarly have management companies. We met with a number of them when we were engaging folks on this. And they have either managing electricity for the units or they have the ability to work with the existing owners, collect that information, and then submit it to the city.
And the way that the City of Boston does it for condo units, large or until that threshold, is that they have the release form that the property management company or the condo association has the owners to sign. And then the condo association or the property management company can then create the account for EverSource or National Grid to then get that information for the whole building.
But the part that I don't get here is, on a condo unit, unless it has an individual meter, it has an overall water meter, it has to have an individual meter for them to tell you how much water each unit has, right?
Right, or if they don't have individual meters, they would give us the energy consumption from the master meter.
So you mean you're going to count all of them combined? So if they don't have an individual meter, right?
Correct, yep.
So what do you do? You count them all?
You do the master meter, and then you would divide it by the number of units to get an average per unit.
That's, that's, down here, see, it says emergency and water reporting from conservative properties. Water use of each building, of each building characteristics, to evaluate building owners. Building owners should report information by using Star Portfolio Management. Building owners, right?
So owners or a property owner.
You are the building owner.
Correct, but as Ibrahim pointed out, there will be a way for owners to designate property managers to do it for them.
So they have to designate it?
They don't have to. It's just an option. So if they don't want to do it.
But over here, it's not an option at the end. They say if they don't comply, you're going to fine $50, $150, and $300.
For non-compliance, but they're certainly the option for property owners.
I don't want to tell you, he's an individual owner. Now, his apartment unit doesn't meet the requirements of big, giant buildings. You've got to incorporate them all for them to have what you're saying, right? So let's say this guy doesn't want to comply. He says, well, I don't know how much water I'm using. Why should I give you permission to come and check all this? You're going to fine him?
So this policy would be a requirement that annual reporting for these covered buildings would be? would be a requirement, or there would be a fine imposed, yes.
Why would you impose a fine? That's the part that, like, I understand what, but here, there's parts here that I don't understand. Water, the city knows how much water you're using.
Correct, and we can easily get that from the water department.
Right, so why is it incorporated in this ordinance? If you can get it, why do you have it here?
So that will be one of the types of energy that we analyze as part of the reporting, and so...
Water's not a, an, I don't know how to say it, energy. Is it energy? Is it just like a gas?
It's considered a utility, so it is, yeah.
But the city does know how much water you use. It knows the consumption. So why is it incorporated here?
Right, so we could pull that directly. I completely agree with you on that. It's electricity, natural gas, the private utility information that we do not have access to right now, hence the reason for the policy.
That, I can understand you wanting to know how much gas goes in your house, how much electricity, but I can't figure out why you want to put water when you already know what the water is. That I can't, that's the thing that I can't. And I don't understand what the condos, individual homeowners and tenants. On this paper, it says tenants have to report, and when the tenant leaves, it does, it says it here, I read it here, where a tenant has to tell you.
The property management company would be in charge of responding.
Right, and in almost every building with more than 20 units?
All those condo buildings you're talking about would be reported by the property management. The condo association would just pass it along to them.
And this paper also says tenants. It does say tenants.
Well, tenants could be, cover commercial, large commercial tenants, not residential tenants.
But it doesn't say, it just says tenants. You can perceive it in different ways.
It does say, so I just want to point out, and look, we could make this clearer if you want, that the intent is not to fine individual condo owners. I can assure you, they won't be fined, and if you want that written more explicitly in here, we can. That individual condo owners won't be fined, but if the condo association refuses, the condo association will be fined.
Fine, that's, that's, that's agreeable.
But I want to, when you mention residential tenants, they have no obligation, and that is crystal clear. If you turn to the, this isn't...
It says here they have to report it.
So if you turn to the third page in and look at the very top, it says residential tenants shall have no obligation to report energy and water use to building owners. They have no obligation, no tenant has any obligation.
But a condo owner is a resident.
Right, a condo owner is different. I agree with you.
Why is it different? It falls under the same thing. It's a tenant living in a condo.
A condo owner is not a tenant, they're an owner, and what we're saying to you is the intent of this, which I think is clear, but if you want it clearer, we can do that, is that no condo owner, no individual condo owner is ever going to be held liable. What, how the system works is, a large condo building with 20 or more units would be subject to this. They'd be subject to the reporting requirement. We would work with the condo association. Yes, I suppose an individual condo owner could be adamant they're not providing any information. That's the responsibility of the condo management company to address. The city would only deal with the condo management company, but if the condo management company failed to report, we would go after the condo management company. The individual owner would never hear from the city.
But the individual owner would be affected because they pay condo fees. So if you're going after the company, you're going to go after the individual owner, because they pay condo fees. When an association has condo fees, which they provide, then the association takes care of all the other stuff. So you actually are going after an individual owner.
The practical reality is, there is no condo owner in a large condominium building who's likely to take that unreasonable position when their condo association says to them, would you please just sign this waiver so we can report the building's energy use?
But I would like to see it clearer, and I think that an individual owner can be subject to it.
I will, I, we, what we can clarify is that no individual condominium owner will ever be subject to a fine.
To a fine, yeah, that's, that's reasonable. And the other one, I would like to see the water taken out. There's no need of the water when the city already has part of the water. Why do you put it in?
I think these are standard types of reporting. You are right, we could take that out, and if that makes it more palatable, we will remove that as well.
Why should you, if you already know the...
Case is made, Councilor, you don't need to repeat yourself. Case made. You made your point, you don't have to repeat. So do you have another question?
I understand, I just want to...
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I have no more questions. This is the questions I had. I had, that's it, no more questions.
Councilor Lopez.
Yeah, my question, Alex, is, so, single family, two apartment, three apartment building, this doesn't apply for it?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And what is the benefit of all of this?
That's a good question. So the main benefit from our municipality's perspective is that this allows us to see who the largest energy consumers and largest polluters are, and work with those buildings and property owners to reduce pollution and reduce energy consumption. So we can do that through a number of ways. So we can work with them to provide energy efficiency measures like new electric heating systems, low-flow fixtures and the like. We can also work with them to provide financing options from state and federal sources to assist them in affording those energy efficiency upgrades. Given the limited amount of money there is for energy efficiency and pollution reduction, we really want to be prudent with how we utilize those resources. So this would allow us to strategically target the worst polluters and the highest energy consumers to ensure that they're using energy efficiency measures wisely.
So, this, this one family, two family, three family, they will get no penalties?
No whatsoever, so anything under 20 units, no penalties, no reporting responsibility.
20 and up, you said.
20 and up, nothing below that applies.
That was said in the paper, right? It was specifically stated, because over here, on small, it says equal to 20,000 or less, 20,000 square feet or less.
So it's 20,000 square feet and 20 units.
So what is it, what is a single-family home in our city? What is the square footage of it?
So an average two-bedroom unit, you know, would be 1,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet, so call a, call a three-family...
Each, the whole unit, right?
Correct, so, you know, 3,000 square feet for a three-family.
3,000, okay. That's real, I understand that.
So these are much larger buildings. This won't, you know, we purposely designed this to not affect homeowners and small property owners.
So the one other point I'd like to make, Councilor Lopez, is that this allows us to collect data in order to design programs that meet the needs of the property owners in the city. And having those data will allow us to apply for grants and other programs from the state and from the federal government, and put us in a better position to receive those competitive funds to help our property owners.
So does this apply to businesses, say, down on Williams Street, Spruce Street area?
That's a good question. So this would apply to many of the businesses down on the Williams-Spreu Street area. So as you can see here in purple, red, and orange, those are the covered businesses down on Williams Street. So we're talking the larger warehouses and, you know, manufacturing and distribution facilities. We've met with many of these property owners so far, and this is already information that they collect regularly, and so reporting it once a year to the city seems to be a light lift for most of them.
And last question, Mr. President. Moving forward, will there be a regulation that you have to sign if you want to come in and do such a project that conforms to what you're speaking of? For instance, on the waterfront, someone wants to come in and they want to build 40 units.
One more question.
Will they have to, before they build, will they have to say, this is what we're going to do to make sure this is energies, you know, regulatory in our favor?
Yeah, that's a good question. So for new, new projects, new development, you know, they would have to comply with this policy. Right now, though, this policy does not require that new construction implement any type of energy efficiency measures on site. So we do have the stretch building code in Chelsea. It's one of the strongest, you know, building codes to promote energy efficiency that we follow. There may also be in the next couple of years, an even stronger building code that's passed down from the state that would require a lot of what you're mentioning. And so because this is intertwined with the state building code, we have limited ability to outright require certain measures like that, but we do recommend them, and we do work with the proponents of projects to advance them, as well as access grants and resources, as Carl was mentioning, since they are in the favor of the city and residents here.
So you mentioned that Chelsea housing authority, we got a big project going up. Are you bringing them up to date on this here and what their requirements are moving forward?
Correct, so we did meet with the Chelsea Housing Authority as we were preparing the proposal. This is energy usage data they collect currently through their facilities management, and so, you know, this would apply to all public buildings, including their properties, city properties, and the like. Public buildings like City Hall and the Housing Authority have been beneficiaries of quite a bit of energy efficiency grant funding over the recent years, and so these are buildings that we have already had our eyes on, and we're just looking to be transparent with the public about the energy that they're all using.
Thank you.
I have one more question, the last question, but it's a simple one. Would all this deter businesses from coming into a city of big developments? From them coming?
That's, that's a fair question. So from our point of view, this type of policy would not deter businesses from coming in the city for two main reasons. The first is that businesses, whether they're medium-sized warehouses or other larger businesses, already do this on a day-to-day basis as part of their operations. Secondly, many surrounding communities like Boston and the like are adopting similar policies, so this wouldn't put us at a competitive disadvantage.
I'm for green too, save our planet, but we also need businesses. You have to have businesses for a planet to grow. If you kill everything and nobody wants to come, what's the point in you enacting something that doesn't serve the purpose? It serves the purpose in one way and kills it in another.
Absolutely, I hear you fully on that.
Any other questions? No more questions. Okay, well, thank you, Alex. Thank you, City Manager, for presenting this. As you know, we will have a formal vote, public hearing, on Monday. I invite you during the public hearing process to just make a few comments, and we'll bring this to a vote on Monday. Thank you.